Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Day City Commission Meeting. And we, where is that? I don't know where it is, but Ike, what do we have?
Well, thank you, Mayor. We're going to continue with our budget presentations for you today. And we have planned for you a discussion of several general fund departments. Just a couple of wrap-up comments from yesterday. We definitely want you to know that we heard you. We are listening to everything you say with respect to the priorities that the Commission shared, and I appreciate those very much. Commissioner, I want you to know, the Mayor has taken your request for public art projects. As a personal project, and the first work is prepared and ready to go.
Let it go.
We appreciate the assistance, Mayor.
That'll be in the lobby of our new city hall.
Yeah.
But we are listening to you. The Mayor graces us every year with his art ability. It's a lot of fun, so thank you for that, Mayor. In your books, you have a couple of tabs, the general fund summary. We gave you an overview of the general fund and the combined funds yesterday. You've got the recap packet that Angie and I worked through, the new position requests. Before we get to department presentation, I wanted to supplement what I provided you yesterday with some additional insight into the process that I went through, working with Angie and Sonia to put the proposed budget that you have before you, so that you understand what the thought process is and you understand a little bit better the perspective of the departments and the presentations that you'll hear today. This is with a new city manager, a new chapter for McGowan, and it was a real opportunity for me, celebrating 13 years with the city, apparently, today. I've been told by most people I've talked to today. But it was an opportunity for me to go back and look at our operations a little bit differently. And so when Angie prepared the request packets and brought them to me from the department, we did engage in a very robust and thorough review of every line item, and I mean that, every line item that had a request associated with it. Between Angie, Sonia, and myself, we went back and looked at a five-year history of how allocated funding was or was not spent. If there was excess spending, we looked at why and the need to supplement that. If there was appropriations that had been made but not used, we looked at why and reallocated those funds to different areas in the budget. As I discussed with the Mayor a little bit earlier today, revenue available to the city is a little bit different than it has looked in the prior couple of years. We've wrapped up a couple of projects. Keita's coming to an end. The bridge construction is coming to an end. ARPA money is coming to an end. And so those funds are not reflected in the budget like they had been previously. And I also took a different approach with the departments in preparing the budget than had been implored in years past. It was a little bit of a surprise, I think, to the departments, and Elvita's smiling at me because she and I, she wasn't in ACM at the time, but she and I arm wrestled a little bit when we met. The difference was, historically, and over the 13 years I've been here, a couple of city managers, city manager's recommendation wasn't made available to departments until about this stage of the process. And I felt like that always put the departments at a bit of a disadvantage in putting their budgets together and working with management to make sure that we had an appropriate budget put together. Not that we didn't get there, but it was a little bit of a tedious task from the department perspective. And so what I did was, as soon as we had gone through our review and made those adjustments that we thought were appropriate, I made recommendations that I shared with the department that had not previously been done. And so when they came to meet with me to discuss what was included or not included, they had an opportunity to understand where I thought the Commission's priorities were, where they thought the Commission's priorities and their needs were, so that we could give you a budget that was a little bit more negotiated than maybe had been in previous years. Also, in doing that, I tried to not wait until we got to this process to hear the needs of the, and really, preferences and priorities of the city commission and incorporating that into the budget, but to draw on what we have heard from meetings and workshops and conversations that we had had with you over the many years most of you have served and during your tenure, Commissioner, to make sure that we got some of those priorities into the budget and to make sure you know that we are listening to those on a continuing basis and will continue to work to incorporate those priorities into the work we do for the citizens we all serve. And so with that perspective in mind, what we'll have for you over the next couple of meetings are departments, our presentations from the various city departments on what they've included in their budget, what their priorities are, what they intend to accomplish over the next budget year or so, and then answer any questions the Commission might have with respect to those. And so we'll begin with the police department, and I will turn the rest of, well, the next portion of this presentation over to Chief Victor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, we want to, first and foremost, express our thanks to the city manager and the staff for, maybe this is one of the reasons, as we get to the point that we're actually, we don't really plan just what the next fiscal year we look back towards. And that is all we do. This year, we were able to start a little bit earlier, and therefore, that mapping process took a little bit better shape for us. And today, we're here to basically cut out, you know, for us, what I would recommend right now is if I told you, yeah, no beef today, and told me to leave, we're good. But now that this is a process by which we're going to figure out some of these things. So we spread out a couple of sheets of paper. Number one, as present, as present to grant like this. And all this intends to show you the basic analysis of the general fund budget schedule and the house. And the one point that I think will benefit this process is that the discretionary funding is somewhere around 2.6% of the amount of that clearing, where the largest property is sitting in the account, and therefore, the base on 2.6% is a bigger number, it would be for example, the smaller one. So that's what we're working with in terms of the discretionary. So on that, I know that you've got, you've got the capital lottery request forms in front of you, this part of the ultimate compass for you, bits and pieces, kind of simplify the discussion. And what I've got in front of me, for example, is the capital lottery request items weighted in the 5,000. Those items in orange, or one item, number one, for example, the indoor video systems for our programs. There are 16 of those. If you go to the right-hand column, it says the city manager recommended zero there, but it is moved, it is moved at minus, moved over to the IT budget. So that's where that is, and that's why that was shown. So we may start with a request at X, and now we may end up here with X minus 0, but that's not necessarily true on space. If you look at the vehicle shortage, that's always an analysis by the depreciation fund in terms of what the fixed one is going to be like this year. We begin with that number in our budget, and then this runs down, it gives move over to the depreciation. So that two, that two is zeroed out there, but then necessarily zeroed on, just to make sure that the numbers are good when this, on the capital, with items.
Raider system also went to Radio Shack, right? To IT?
Yes, sir. If you look at the next sheet, which is the item less than 5,000 dollars, you know, everything in yellow is something that we'd like to rework into our budget. And then the item, the item that's orange, highlighted in orange, is the radar system that we're trying to put through. And those two, then moved over to the IT budget. So here, it looks like there's not, there's zero money for it here, but the places, the information that we have, and now it is going to be in the IT budget, and therefore, we do it. So from our capital, from the expenditures, and from the money that we've asked for in the budget, is all at 104, and we're good with the budget as proposed, and recommended at this point in time. The goal for us is 1.3 million, months plus, we're going to have that, is basically the required budget movements that we have in place for all of the logistics.
Why the quantity of 16, I see 10 over there? Is this an ongoing thing that we do every year?
Yes, sir. I remember this year, we bought 48 units with the forfeiture money that we were able to put, a good one, we spent about $150,000 to buy the 48 last year. We need to know 16 to take the balance, so we have those 10 that we got from the tax unit funding for that. So that puts us at 74 components, which has, with new investment, so that's why we have 16, and you have 40, the 74. We bought 48 earlier this month.
Next one. Any other questions?
You're not requesting any additional officers?
I remember we, we got the house there.
Right, but that wasn't a year or two ago, no?
And, you know, we got 15 officers through that.
Yeah, I remember that, but that was two years ago, no?
We are at...
Goes through a grant, and then we were gonna go...
No, I understand, but that was two years ago.
That number, that number keeps in the 2.00 way.
Oh, I see. So do you foresee any need for future officers in the year, next year or two? I'm just trying to see forecasting.
And I'm, so my forecast for that number will reach population in the 2.00, come to me again, in the fiscal period of 2029.
Okay.
We'll be looking at, if we want to keep that 2.0 ratio that we worked all these years to keep moving, then it'll be 2029 before we have to revisit.
I'll be long gone by that point. No.
Well, yeah, 25, I guess, I mean, this is...
Yeah, 25.
25, that's just...
And what is our authorized strength at this point?
217.
217. And we still have some vacancies, right, or some slots or not?
Right now, we've got, we've got 38 vacancies right now. We're looking right now at a background pool of 18, we can hardly get the 16 out of that in my estimate. We're also, we're testing especially the perimeter around, so our next test is supposed to be September, or next December, so we've got an academy in progress. We hire very, very well, and therefore, the state agency, the federal agency, that basically the hardest to... And that's okay. I, you know, I say that okay, my name is elected, but I'd rather have the problem of having to reskill because people are hiding out or are closed, as opposed to having a battle with people that want to go somewhere and nobody wants to.
What happens to the monies? We budget for a complete 317 or whatever, right? But what happens to that money?
To give you an idea, typically, typically, we understand, and it's, I'm gonna say, this is why it makes it so easy for us every year, because we don't really, we don't really come and check if we're helping, we have the million buttons with the budget and how budget, but, but we typically understand between 2 and 4%. This year, I think that agency will be between 5% of the total budget amount, so...
But the total budget amount, because you're, you're the most, the most, I mean, we spend more money in police departments than anything else. And definitely, benefits says here, between compensation and benefits, it's, I'm reading here 91% of budget, of your budget, goes to that. So if you're 2%, you're saying you're only 2%?
The number that I'm working with is from the, based, the whole number of the budget. You understand that. But the lion's share of that, that understanding, isn't that personnel in the backup?
Yeah, the lion's share is there, 90% of it, right?
There's also, there's also...
Now, benefits is benefits, right? But compensation, well, no, benefits off, please.
It's in compensation. The one thing that also, Commissioner, having that activity the way that it's typically reported in our budget, is that it's in expenditure, it doesn't necessarily show up in the budget. For example, let's say we have, we have many officers that need, for, you know, our average, if we can make it to the 24, that's our average loss which is more than, many of them will have, the next 100 hours of $16, the vacation hours are payable to them from the function. And so the way to, way to pay for that, because we're understanding in that category. But, so, as part of that, we still understand, but what gives us the ability to pay for that, we fight that, we have the agency side.
Commissioner, to help supplement the information that the police chief is providing you, so with all the general fund departments, if we have budgeted to pay a salary that is not paid, that rolls back to the general fund. We also budget a certain percentage that we anticipate won't be paid and recapture that as part of this budget. I'll get you the exact line number so you can see it in your backup, but we do that citywide.
Well, if you use 2%, between the 31 million and the 10 million, you're, you're at it to $900,000.
Yeah.
So that's...
And, you know, we've got...
If you use 2%, if you use three and five, you're over a million dollars.
The only reason I'm saying three to five this year is that this year has been the year where we have, we have lost a larger than usual number of police officers, particularly at this year. They weren't on the highest rate here in the last six to nine months. And when I say, because I'm not thinking, I think McGowan is the one source of losses for that. The largest, already one in the school, government, police department, that they, they, so they've got a lot of losses. So that's why I'm saying to you that this year, the number maybe is making the fight for survival.
Well, I mean, where your turnover over after the city is 15%, I mean, you're gonna have that.
Yeah, our official...
By the time you replace them, you put, you put it out for...
So our official police office is 7%. It's going up from, let's say, about 6.2 or 7.0 this year.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Chief.
What do we have next? Mayor, next, we have a presentation of the proposed budget for the fire department. Chief Gloria?
Mayor, Commissioner, I will, since that's an opportunity, and so I want to recap a little bit of the, in which we talked about strategic plan and the, not just currently, but this is deeper. And so we plan to summarize that, you know, through three aspects, there were big topic items to discuss, was staffing, apparatus, facilities. So when it comes to those three items, there is a conference dialogue behind the scenes that said that, to will. And so those are projects, as you understand, that go beyond the scope of this incoming budget year. Not to say that that is not being discussed, that's not being, you know, normalized and molded into, into a project that's a particular project. So we may not see too much of that in this, in the budget, but again, that is not to say that that is not being worked out. So the main focus of this incoming budget year is basically the management of our, you know, any operations, which one of the things that we've been working on the last two, three years is to improve on asset tracking of all of our equipment that's on board, the apparatus, bumper DPD, things of that nature. So all of that has been worked out, which would come up, and device projections as what the current and upcoming needs are going to be. And that is worked into this particular, into this particular budget request. As never, as never request, we all understand that we don't get approval of 100% what is requested. Like Mr. Tovol mentioned, it is very much appreciated that you get to see earlier in the game, what it is that is being proposed by him, or what it is that he may still have a question before he can make a definitive decision. During those hearings with him, I did get the opportunity to, I appreciate the, you know, 40, or 60, 40 minutes that I had an opportunity to discuss with him, and just give all of the needs that we have right now and here in the upcoming two, three more years. And so he made some adjustments to that, at this point in time, the proposed budget that we have is something that is, that has suffice to what we need to do during this incoming budget year. But again, every action that has been taken today is in line with the strategic plan that we discussed, going back to the retreat and those additional discussions that I mentioned that continue to happen on the scenes, with the oil and city management. So again, asset tracking and, and creating depreciation schedule of all that equipment is something that we used to not have, we have it there, and so that has been reflected now on budget request that we have. And so I fully understand that we are requesting things that maybe in the past we used to have requests, but there's a quote, you cannot manage what you can track. And so that has been the focus the last two, three years, you know, tracking, 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 and then the ponderation that we can make proper predictions, so that we can step off the expenses of the target that we've been, currently, as years to come. All of that basically translates to the management of our line items and our capital lottery and non-capital lottery items. And so those were the items, like I said, that we had the opportunity to dialogue further, justify the substantial requests that the fire front have taken the last two, three years. And again, those numbers have been adjusted. At this point in time, I don't have anything to add or further request that hasn't already been discussed with the cinematicer, and I'll close party questions by saying that, you know, the folks that we have right now is gonna help us to keep the content and keep ourselves off for success in the future.
And okay, y'all discussed quite a bit, and to me, pretty much streamlined this, and y'all can have kind of agreed to this, but is there, I forgot to ask the chief too, anything else that y'all couldn't agree, or at least you think you'd like to have that, you don't have, but that you really need, not just want, because right now, the resources are a little tighter than they have been before.
So the answer to you is, yes, there are things that we...
I thought there would be.
No, absolutely. But you bring it back to staffing apparatus and facilities, you know, this rastor around background, Jersey background to ISO, but again, those are projects that, that we are currently discussing, but that, those are projects that he's gonna think, you know, funding and strategic planning beyond the scope of this incoming budget. So for the daily operations, you know, it does what someone may be something that's gonna affect the operations throughout 25, 26, but like I mentioned again, you know, I'm just saying that discussing the staffing apparatus and stations is not going to take a place.
And I don't, I don't want the chief to sell himself short. For example, on staffing, you know, he, he came in with a request for 12 firefighters for a firehouse that may come online here in the future. You've got a safer grant in, you know, when, when those grant proceeds are available, we'll start bringing firefighters in on a scheduled basis to make sure that we're staffing up to the needs of the department. I know that we've got a couple of trucks, some pumpers, that are coming up, probably in advance of what our current depreciation schedule would allow to replace, but we're working with Michelle in putting together public safety package. You know, those are million-dollar items, and so we're working to, with the fire department, I know he mentioned ISO. That's, that's a big project of mine, and getting the fire department to that highest ISO rating, because that, that directly results, and I'll let the chief expand on, on what that is, because that directly translates to insurance savings to your residents. And so getting the fire department to that next level of protection is important to us. But we want to get there in a strategic and organized way. So I don't want you to think that we're not paying attention to the needs of the fire department or that request for staffing. It's there, the grant request is in. When we get those money, we'll put those, those positions in the budget and start staffing up, so we're ready when that next station opens to fulfill the needs of the department. Chief, would you talk a little bit about ISO and, and what you and I have discussed about moving the city forward in that regard?
Correct, so ISO, as you mentioned, Mayor, yes, has to do with each resident's business and work happening in the city. Wherever in ISO 2, we're very close to, you know, 1. Those three items are three of the key elements that, you know, help us make an improvement on our ISO rating and meaning to get there. But like I said, all of that is more part of the strategic plan that could take us, you know, two to handful of years, maybe a little bit more, depending on all the different items. Especially facilities, that's gonna be in the millions. And so again, we have been having constant discussions, what properties are next, what projects are next, what are the time and some routines to start working on that, to wait to see what's gonna happen with staffing. And so again, those are items that are being worked on. They may not be reflected here, because this is, this is beyond the operational theory of the budget, but those things are...
Public safety is never compromised. Right. Good, but there was a lot of items here.
Yeah, so...
You, you, you know, you, you had a wish list, you had $5 million. $5.3 million in, in your...
If you look at the list of capital leveling, non-capital leveling, that's where, that's where you see a lot of your personal, a lot of the stupid equipment, like I mentioned. Things that we were, started tracking, now they're being tracked, if you can, based on the projected lifetime of that...
Because they're being tracked, there's more of a...
Yeah, now we're being able to say, okay, this is time for budget, maybe we had never requested before, because we're being reactive and waiting for it to fail, or whatever you try to, try to request, and now you're starting to see a comprehensive list, but it's all on the schedule, just calling it, that we're putting together to be able to, better than the other ones.
Yeah, and Commissioner Agita, when you look at, you know, where we did prioritize, you know, some of the capital items that we discussed, vehicles, pumper trucks, million-dollar items, you've got, you know, 2.2, almost 2.2 million dollars in requests for vehicles. You know, we, we discussed, you know, getting those a little closer to their depreciation before we replace those items. Items that we could get into this year's budget very comfortably, we made sure to take care of those, and like Elvita, Public Works and Sanitation talked about when we get there, chief and I arm wrestled a bit over some of those items. But he did a great job, in terms of outlining down to the forks and knives he needed at the firehouse, all of the minutia of what he's tracking over there. He did a great job.
Mike, I think the concern is make sure that public safety is never compromised, and also the safety of the firefighters. As long as everything's good, you're good.
Can you refresh my memory, are we already on track or already in the process of acquiring property for another fire station?
Yes, sir. That, that is in condemnation. We had the Commissioner's hearing. We're in the process of appealing that award, and we'll be briefing you in executive session coming at the end of August.
Okay. Okay. And then the other question is, and you kind of alluded to it, you know, some, three, four years ago, we had a, it wasn't a pumper truck, it was another truck that was involved in a car accident on Interstate 2, and it was serviced or put out of commission. You know, we're getting to a point, you know, that I think the depreciation, depreciation schedule is a good thing to have, but, you know, what's our backup in the event of a, I don't want to call it catastrophic event, but that is a catastrophic event. And knowing that these pieces of equipment, you can't just go to Walmart, you know, take it off the shelf. I mean, this is a year, year and a half, maybe two years purchase order.
A year and a half is normal right now. Don't be surprised if it's a year and a half.
Years, right.
And so that's, that's part of the strategic plan that we discussed, and have been working on this, and which, Michelle, should develop that plan, because, yes, we have a lot of apparatus that have been versioned in the past, of different high brands, but based on the different depreciation schedules that we've had, trying to narrow, narrow down this discussion, we have a collision point where we, we live it, let it be the way it is.
Right.
We're gonna have anywhere between 4 and 6, maybe even 7 apparatus.
All at the same time.
For replacement in a, in a very short period of time, and, and that's the information that has been presented up just during budget, like, you know, and subject with discussions, and that's the plan that, that you recently shared with me, and so there, we're working on that. Again, we bring it back to my comment of, you may not see that stuff here, but that is not to say that those are pretty good items, that is not to say that they're not being pushed forward. So plans are being developed, and how it's, all the information is, is on their table, which is my duty to, to provide and get information to the buyers, and the product guys, and chippy down.
Because I think the better job that we can do forecasting and seeing, knowing how long it takes to, you know, put in the, the order, how long it's gonna take to construct, and then to delivery, to spread it out over years, if possible.
And that's key, Commissioner, the forecasting of the apparatus, which then going back to the lengthy list of equipment that you see, is that we're putting all that on a forecasting list of, you know, what is the technology going bad for certain length of years, how, you know, how often do they need to replace, and how many do they have, how many should we replace in every budget year, so that we don't end up having to buy 10 or 15 of them in one shot? That's something that we didn't have. So that, that's, that's the reason why you're beginning to see very lengthy lists if you want to, but it's going back to, we are developing asset tracking systems to be able to forecast better, plan better for the purpose, and just accountability, Jeff.
Sure. Very well. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Okay, Mayor, next on our list today is Parks Department.
The Fund Department.
The Fund Department.
The Fund Department.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner. Thank you to Ike, the public committee.
Um thank you to Ike, uh the public committee, uh the board of directors, like Ike mentioned. Um you know, they give us more time this year to prepare um the budget and then go back to them and see what matters work. Uh it's good to say that we can come under budget this year, again. Looking forward, we did a lot of projects this year, and I'm very intrigued in how the department on what we've accomplished. Um we still got a lot more work to do uh looking forward to next fiscal year on the projects that were provided from capital improvements. Uh to provide a service of of quality of life to a trucking mission. So um parks and recreation, obviously eight divisions. Um you guys have that in front of you, uh going through the budget process this year. Uh again, we we looked at the priorities. Um we're very happy of what we were approved and recommended back to the CM and budget committee. Um so so moving forward, um we were taking a different approach to this, right? So once we got this back, we already started finding out what it's gonna look like next fiscal year, right? Add that to our five year plan, based off of our master plan, what we saw was the most uh important factor was to upgrade parts to improve the quality of life of events. Uh and so that's what we're focused on moving into the next fiscal year, which if you look at the budget, um was recommended by by CM yourself. So um I'll anticipate any questions you guys have right now. Uh but again, we're extremely blessed uh with with what the budget this year forecasted for us.
One of the things I want to highlight that Denny didn't mention, and that doesn't apply to next fiscal year, but it does apply to this fiscal year. I know there were several requests from the commission to look for uh ways to fund park improvements, uh enhancements, uh especially to Camp McAllen um as soon as possible. Uh and so we worked with Denny, we worked with Angie, uh and were able to identify uh some bond funds uh that were designated uh for parks improvements, a particular park. But when we went back and we scrutinized the bond, uh Denny will have a little extra money uh there to be able to provide enhancements to Camp McAllen. Uh so that's a priority that we're gonna take on right now. Uh additionally, his department is charged with maintaining facilities uh at places like Imus. He's, he's working with them uh to get air conditioners replaced that have aged out. And we've been able to find money to accomplish those tasks uh now as well. Uh you all approved the budget amendment to get that done this year. So uh Denny takes on a lot, both within this budget uh and to serve the community generally, uh and always manages to find creative ways to go really above and beyond to borrow the airport or above beyond to borrow the slogan there from the airport, uh to make sure that the uh parks amenities, recreation amenities that we're providing to uh our constituents, the residents that we serve, the visitors to McAllen, really far beyond what you'll find uh here regionally. So uh my compliments to Denny and his team over at the Parks Department, they're uh second to none.
I agree, and actually, I think we hit a home run with Camp McAllen. The community is
Do you have any good enough there?
No, I I walked it today. I was sweating like a little piggy, but it is so beautiful. It is so beautiful. I was so glad to see a family with three kids, uh somebody else. It was cool kind of started and it's a, it's a great place. It needs other stuff, but then we've got to be careful not to put too much because then but it's, it's, it's a, it's a home run, but the community really loves it. We get a, I get a lot of compliments on it and that's why I had, we did the groundbreaking with the ribbon cutting, but I haven't walked it. It is awesome.
And so y'all obviously figured out staffing logistics for it?
So that's what we're currently doing right now. Uh and so we have flexibility with staffing. Uh we just hired eight personal staff to come onboard to help us out as of right now. We do have a full time uh person overseeing that facility, uh the superintendent of outdoor recreation. Um with the hours of operation that we're doing, because you see that every time, a few times they lose something. Fall and spring is gonna be kind of low, uh low end uh usage. So uh right now, we're, we're testing that out. Um it's, it's been working well for us. Um with hours of operation on this forefront, uh the park is gonna be open from eight AM to to dusk, right? And so it's, it's, it's the only year going into that as any other park that we have in the city. Um and so basically, the ones that we're gonna be managing would be the archery range, the camp ground, and the school. But those will all have statistical
What about security?
Security, we are looking into security, uh especially with the camp, overnight camps. And so basically, we'll have a security guard and and staff. Uh that's the model
But during the day, do we have a security?
No, sir, we don't.
We don't, many parts.
So we don't
I'm sure we don't have many parts, you're right, okay. I'm just saying, this one has some hidden areas, you know?
Yeah.
And that's something that we could revisit, uh and put it back to see what that's all
Hopefully nothing happens.
Security is very expensive.
It is.
Put up, put up a sign, play it at your own risk.
So it's your own risk.
Well, Danny, what about?
Watch out for the mayor.
What about the fishing, have we stopped it or? And even if we do, don't we need like a narrator or something?
It's currently stopped now, uh we are
Because I hear the fishing is not good.
Or the fishermen are.
Or the, I was gonna say.
They have a, it is stopped. Um people haven't catch a fish, you know, it's on the honor system, we're hoping they're catching these, right? Uh maybe that we get sent in photos that get sent in, we'll post them on our Facebook account. And we do stop twice a year. Uh so we'll restock Farnin's uh town lake and and this lake. Um hopefully, when we get the irrigation system uh up and running, uh they can go through the irrigation district one. And hopefully, when they know, you fill the lake up with that water, they'll literally send a fish.
But we don't need irrigation?
Right now, what we're seeing is it's, it's amazing because the two ecosystems from that, the town and and then town lake. Town lake, we have irrigation, we have, we found plenty of water to circulate that water and we see algae growth. Here at Camp McAllen, there is no irrigation and there is no algae growth or algae growth. Uh and so something that we're looking at, um we, we will probably bring in some irrigation. Um but as right now, I mean, we see bait fish, we see venoms, women. Um and so we know that the livestock in there is, is surviving. Um and so we'll just have to
And Kinta's not part of this, right? They have an ugly pond there.
Well, but, but we, we do have
Can't blame him.
Well, that's the thing, you know, your expertise is, is so much. I mean, we do need to have expertise really analyzed.
So we do partner with Texas Park and Monarch?
Okay.
Yes, yes, sir. So they would, they would come out, um one, we would do a fish study to see exactly how much we, because we don't want to overpopulate the lakes. So we do work with Texas Park and Monarch, we have a local grant that we do consult.
Okay, well, that, that's what I want to do.
Hey Danny, the um, these like a robot striker, though. It says yearly subscription, how do we strike now then?
It's men, but we have a machine that can fill up the tank.
Yeah, and you walk
Yeah, sit on the
So what's this, what's this request?
This one was a subscription for a, a non motor, uh well, non personnel. So we will put coordinates in depending on what the field would look like, put those coordinates in GPS in the tank.
Trying to get rid of our employees?
Oh, this is a Roomba, right?
Okay, are we going to uh implement the uh pirate system also?
The biggest concern
The biggest concern is an automated city commission.
We don't want AI.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't need AI.
Look at, that's the newest technology that the, the bigger cities are looking into because, right, it's, it's gonna cost, right? So they're trying to look for a production on personnel machine equipment that you don't need. So you have to have somebody oversee it. They, they, they can be striking while staff can do something else at the same time, right?
Yeah, right. Danny, do you have any surveillance cameras there?
Yes, sir, we do. At the, but not sports park, uh farmers park, community sevens, um we do have
So I mean, parks, parks that is out there doing a lot, and obviously you have a lot of equipment. To the mayor's point on previous, is there something here that you think you really, really might need? Cause you've got excavators, hilarious, motors. And so we don't want you to be too strange.
Right, no, 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 sir, um
With the eighty dollars I got this
Adding bonuses if you think
Did the best I could, Commissioner.
So what we really were looking at and focusing on again was, part of my five year plan was for a fleet, for a parks division. We had a lot of hand downs, we're gonna get those out of the rotation because there's no depreciation on this.
Right.
So we were, we were given two this year. Uh and 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 so that's helping us move. And then the biggest thing that we had was getting a, an implement, a blue work implement. Uh it's a bigger, it's a bigger mower. So the twenty acre facilities that we have are sports complexes.
Right.
Uh we're not using a fuel return, we got to do all this stuff to go and get the job done about that.
That's it.
Back with you, so.
I nominate Commissioner Hadad for park ranger.
Just get me some of the robots to work with.
There you go.
Very good. You asked for personnel, right? I seem to remember.
We did, and so right now, you know, uh thank, thank, thank Lord that we are, we are almost fully staffed in parks. We just missing some uh frontline, groundskeepers one and two. Uh but for the most part, we are fully, the first time in a long time, uh staffed. Um and so that helps us out a lot. Uh and then looking at this and what we requested, again, looking back on how we come up with this list and how the team comes up with this list, we've got a better, I guess, idea now moving forward on what, what is really getting needed, right? So take a look at the past and always let the team know. If this stuff that we don't get, does it really affect our operations? Like, it didn't, it doesn't. And so, you know, moving forward with our five year plan, we add this into the five year plan, see if we really need that. Right there.
Okay.
To really ask more
What are city park ratings? Effectiveness measure? I think it's just a summary of y'all's performance measures, but
It's the last 67 of the handout, the You're looking like, that's news to me.
What is, what is exactly, what is exactly city park ratings?
City park ratings?
Yeah. Like, what's it measuring?
So that will be made from surveys that, that we do, so we do a survey every three years. Uh based on, on, you know, the questions that we ask. Um it says our, the department helps with that. Um and so we can share that with you, it's the uh what's the name of it?
The goal is eighty percent.
Yeah, you went from ninety to eighty? Went from A to B?
It's not very, it's not very, you know, the, 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 the community, I mean, it, it's tough.
All right, so chief, so I'm gonna use a catchphrase again in the forecasting part. Does the personnel that you listed here for this budget proposal contemplate some of the things where we're looking at, at the workshop we had some months ago? No?
No.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
Yeah, when that comes, it's
Have to relook at it again.
That will be a standalone.
Right, that's gonna be a lot of personnel, man.
Oh, I want to congratulate you, Tony. I don't know if you saw that, that uh message they sent, the constituent to send the, that they were happy about the water playground over here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Good for your team.
A splash pad.
Keep the water flowing, bro.
Yeah, so that's awesome, dude. Somebody, you know, come up with
You want to keep them open.
So yeah, no, I think we're looking at it because of how hot it's been. Especially during the summertime, we're gonna continue that schedule uh going into the fall. Uh unless otherwise told, the change
Yeah, Commissioner Castillo, thank you for recognizing that. I I did share that message with the com- commission. Uh there were some requests from some of our residents, some of our homeschool communities, uh wanting to make sure that they had cool places for their kids to be able to access. Uh forwarded those messages over to Denny and and hats off to Denny, Commissioner, you're right. Uh he jumped on that um and was able to find a way to make those facilities available to those, to those kids in the community. So uh like I said, I mean, it, it's the fun department, but they are second to none when you look around here in the valley.
You know, there, there, there's sort of times that you can
We can probably agree with that specific group of residents that are homeschooling. So like, hey, which day do you guys want to go? Tuesday, we can do Tuesday, we can adjust to that one and keep the, the other uh schedule as it is. You know, well, we can, we can always play, you know, uh adjust, adjust with them and and
Danny, Danny's been able to, to work that out and he's just done a fantastic job, Commissioner, so thank you for recognizing that.
The pool, the pool hours and the manning of the pool, that's another
So we were taking a look at the values, uh yours based on the the team is going back and looking at, but it's forward priority, you know, would be for the summertime to open up that may be the to the rental bar, seven, eighteen in the night.
Right.
So what is the most that the community is looking, you know, seven o'clock and looking at morning till six o'clock and doing seven o'clock? Lots of time for the day, so looking at how we switch those priorities with the team is something that we're really, if, 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 if we saw it this year, right? Uh and again, based on the ability to platform, what makes more sense for the community?
And I hate to say this, but I've heard that for the last three years since I've been here. And it's always the pool hours, the, the availability of lifecarts, not having you now. And yeah, we are three years, four years later and we're hearing the same thing, so. We've got to tackle it, just, just like we tackle this thing, we've got to tackle this thing. What keeps going on?
I saw that Palm View requested blinds. I understand by not be a necessity, more of a want than a need, but it says here they're currently using butcher paper? So we're not funding it, but I'm, I'm like, do we really want butcher paper on the windows and
No, so that's something that we look at, that they can buy from them. Right, there's, there's general line items that they have, that they can go and purchase those items.
Okay.
So that's been re-directed and we told
So they'll get their clients.
Correct.
We'll buy it, cause that's embarrassing. You have a beautiful, expensive facility and we get that.
Off the window, they do have lots, it's, it's the gym doors that have the small windows. They cut out, they block that out because they don't want, or just the CN because of the safety. So it's the small windows, it's not the regular sized
They can probably just buy some kind of like frost laminate or something, right?
Or, or yeah, but laminated
Like, 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 like the door, like the door behind you.
Correct, yes, a doctor
Yeah, just something cut out film or something.
So we told them, you know, that's not, not really a, but the request out of that is something that you can take a look at in your general line items, but your
Okay.
Anything else?
Hey chief, I got a couple of rolls of rating barrier.
Thank you, Danny.
Anybody else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Engineering.
Okay.
Mayor, Commissioner, thank you for time, uh give us to get our new budget. These guys aren't taking any money if you want
You can take the butcher paper they take.
I was gonna say, don't thank us yet, we haven't started.
I'd like, I'd like to thank the city manager for the effort to prepare the budget for you. Uh this, at the city, the city manager mentioned yesterday, we didn't know what it was gonna be like going into this process. It is a different process. Uh what I'll say to the engineering department, uh is it, it's a, we like the process, we finished there with the refreshing, we did change. Uh which I, we got in there early. We, we were able to go back and forth, have those stuff discussions on what's needed, uh new business part, and make sure that was addressing the city's needs and the city manager for the counseling. So I just wanted to open with that. Um we had the opportunity to have one on one meetings with the office of budget and management and finance. We, um that was, that was interesting because we, we made those discussions uh with the question and all, all the different counseling that we were able to do that later in my, my presentation. Uh but when we look at that, uh what stands out is the level of engagement. So again, thank you, I can really go down this. Um I wanted to just go over a little bit of the engineering department, what we've covered. The engineering department, uh as you know, plays a critical role in maintaining the resources that we have here, whether it's for grants, uh streams and special projects. And then beyond that, there's just missing these things that, as I go through this, you'll realize, in touch about every department in this city. Um and many different aspects, uh I'll give you an example, for that, we just, that, that's way out of our realm. It's something that we, we have to, we have to Um that, that's what this department does, it gives us a challenge. Um, that, that's what this department does. We give us a challenge, we're, we're, they're the champion. And so kudos to the management leadership that we have, our administration. They deal with a lot of different budgets and a lot of POs, a lot of replications. Uh, a lot of compliance issues where we have to deal with several partners. We have the bridge, we have the queue. Uh, when we look at those projects, our administrative staff, like I said, is second to none. They do a great job, great partnerships with finance and budget. Our development engineering team, uh, is a known team and partnership or division that we have. We've worked hand in hand with Ahmad and more ones who plan to have, you know, what is just up to, to implement today. Uh, but we've worked hand in hand to make sure that we're keeping the development moving forward. Um, also advancing to that, or to finance, to that multiple. Um, it's a tremendous responsibility, so we all take it serious. We wanna make sure that our developers that are out there, leaders, are, they're using our tenity. And so the engineers, engineers part in the small role in that, uh, with our key partners of building, planning and coaching plan. Um, our engineers as well, as you, you tell, we handle over ninety percent. Twenty, there's twenty funds that I showed yesterday, we touched nineteen of those. So, the only one that I, I didn't see any such, we therefore, Jeremy does a great job there. Um, he's standing alone with that. And so that, that goes to the engineering business, we're dealing with the project management around. The construction managers, our inspectors and our project managers, we do a vertical construction, private project, and public development. We have over a hundred projects that are on board. At any given time, we have lots of points in each discussion in a fiscal year. Um, that's, that's a tremendous number. Uh, right now, we have over a hundred million dollars plus that are in construction. That doesn't include what's in design and what's in the management design. Um, we handle the city hall and government center as two long divisions. Um, we bring that up as it is, the call under that budget. On top of that, we, according to you, we give a partner. We're on the MPO board. We deal with the brains district, we deal with, we deal with brain split mission, uh, tax protection issue. Uh, along with other several partners, uh, who are in the, uh, scripter partners out there. So the engineers are, are out there and collaborating with the engineering partners. Uh, with that's done, thirty-one staff members. Yeah, as I said, dealing with different technical difficulties and they do a great job. So I wanted to highlight that. Uh, and having said that, uh, uh, going into the budget a little bit, uh, or before the budget. The major budgets we delivered, I'm assuming a small sample, we delivered for cap stuff, we just, well, the private development. Uh, where we partnered with, with the developers. We helped design that in two steps. Um, that was a unique project that, that needed special attention. Uh, we've been small, for that the brains of project, summer repayment, we handle that, two point project, million dollars a year. Morris Park, Castle Parks, fire station, fire station.
Morris Perez Park.
Morris Perez Park.
Don't talk to, to, about a park that way.
So having said that, I'll, I'll tell you some of the challenges we've had. So as, as we go and present throughout the year, inflation has still been a issue for us. And so as we present, we will see projects. I'm not the only person in the valley in the state from the nation that, that had a deal with inflation. When you go through the internet and you look at the inflation markets, it goes up eleven percent. Uh, wood lumber is up, I think it's fifty percent. Your, your materials is sixty to seventy percent of a project. And that's escalating with those types of steel lumber. It gets out of my control and those numbers just stay down. And so I bring that up just to soften when I, when I go forward.
Like a four hundred thousand dollar bathroom, like that? I forgot that conversation. Beautiful. They're gonna be beautiful.
Our branch department will do a great job of making sure that we, we stay in line and my engineers are up to date on what's in need to do. So we thank them, but it is, it is a, an operational challenge. Um, recently we're doing ERPs, there's a digital, everybody projects, they were finding out of it. That's a challenge, a staffing challenge, it's a resource challenge, uh, something that we face and Jeff has, uh, you know, put the challenge together to do that, but it's like Daniel and the engineers, but we're looking at, on ERP. So we welcome the challenge and we're gonna do the challenge. Uh, looking at our budget, so we requested three million, eight five thousand dollars more debt. City manager gave me two point nine dollars more debt. Our adjusted budget last year was two point nine million dollars. So very close to what we're running in the year of the adjusted budget, we walk forward, forward with it. Uh, I'll tell you how that reflects. We requested an eight point three percent, uh, increase of the budget. Obviously, I could start making a four percent budget, so we were slightly over there. And so we understand when we went back and forth, why we were cut back and we were trying to meet that four percent growth, which is pretty big somewhere just between two and three. So that, that was a little bit brutal for us. Uh, when we look at, uh, adjusted budget, it's a five point six percent increase of what we were placing. City manager recommendation of two point eight percent increase, that aligns closer to the four percent. Um, and so when we went back and forth, we stopped going with that two point eight percent sixty seven K was from our original budget. But what I would like to highlight, when, when we took, how we placed, it's all point three four percent higher than the adjusted budget.
Point, point what?
It's point three four higher than the adjusted budget. And, and the reason I highlight that is because I wanna highlight, you can kind of sell my key values. The tremendous job that we've had, has done in maintaining the urban environment and putting this project out. We're getting a budget very close to what the adjusted budget was. And, and we're knocking out the projects that say we're doing accordingly. We're managing over a hundred million dollars in construction. That doesn't include private development, like a company we've done with the development team that we manage as well. Um, we're very appreciative of the city manager's, uh, approach to this new budget. And we think it, it means our role, means that our tenement agreement down towards the city in the town. We're addressing funding concerns through the capital project, we're addressing transportation needs and we're addressing special projects. Those special projects, those are projects that are highlighted by the mission. When we know that transportation and drainage is highly important. And when we look at the capital budget, that we're not going over today, which we, we like to focus on as engineers. We are addressing a lot of drains and a lot of transportation. We've, we've already completed our twenty year transportation plan, we came up with these projects for Michelle. We're very close to completing our drainage twenty year plan and having to come up with these projects as well. That's a huge success story for it. Um, that is, that has been sitting there and in the past six to seven years, we've really accelerated funding sources and grants and thoughtful management has helped to get those projects out. And so we totally, I, I'll say this. We, we were, we were made committed to delivering a safe and reliable infrastructure, which is these type of things, drains and special projects. We think the, the budget, the city manager recommending budget alignment, we have a power panel for ours. And the broader vision of the community, uh, and I would give the city's seat at the forefront of this budget. Uh, we thank the city commission for your opinion, for that support, and for the community support. And if you wanna give me a hilarious.
Give you a little hot wheels. It's just the only question, and I, we're funding it, but the NPO con- consult, consultation is for what? Where's it go towards?
So, when we sat down with us, we asked, what, what is this going to be? And we, for years, and this is through the same boundary, we, we did a target and feel upon this strongly to that. It's a very complicated process that moves the state legislature, regionally boom. And you feel that bringing in a partner to, that does that through time. Uh, and to strategically look at our projects and not put steam line and get them out. And you, and I think, Commissioner, that you, you were at the last meeting, you see how it gets when you're not.
Everybody's competing for this one.
Well, yeah.
We're hoping to change that, Commissioner. I, I.
For a minimum investment of forty-five thousand dollars.
We can get.
In, in, in the first month, we hope to get projects to line up, getting ready to get federal dollars.
Is it a third party? And so the third party is gonna lobby the members? Or, or, or compile projects and try to wrangle them in priority?
One, they'll, they'll look at that. Uh, what's coming down the pipeline, so a lot of times they'll, uh, federal funds that are coming through. We get there like two weeks before we're not keeping up to date with the legislation.
Okay.
Then in two weeks, we're trying to spam or to get a project ready.
They'll be ahead.
And everybody else, somehow, they have, they have someone on board on their cycle, has already.
Identify and check them.
Line up their project, got it ready. And so the time the one that goes forward, they're prepared.
And they want, they want, now they want shovel-ready kind of projects.
They want shovel-ready.
Of course.
Because of what they allocate it and they don't start for years.
Exactly. So that, that's why we have to be ahead of, ahead of the game.
See if that's appropriate. If we either add more in there or we need to reduce that. And then help them guide us on focusing.
Commissioner, when, when Eduardo explained it to me when we were going through the budget process, it really seemed like a modest investment from my perspective. To get us prepared to be as competitive as possible for dollars that we're missing out on.
Yeah, not too good, like it's, it's good, well, new tactic, all forward.
Yeah, I agree. I, we didn't fund that, that first, uh, designer subdivision coordination.
Uh, we did software instead, as I recall.
No, and you didn't, you didn't fund software?
We, we picked, we, we picked one of those softwares, we had a, we put a priority notice. Um, when we looked at this, we told one of those that recommended this year, um, we think it's the one we wanted. And so we will table that with the position, we discussed that with Ike. Um, you know, right now, we do have some, some on board. And so that approach is, I've worked for, is a fact. You know, we're looking at the budget, if that was gonna change, definitely need, need this decision. We, we feel like we're tapping, we have those, uh, engineers made for to help us, uh, meet those goals. And so it's still covered, including the capital budget, so that pays for the design. And we go and out, we've been outsourcing, uh, some of those projects to them. That's who will probably, that position. And so we, we agreed on not, not funding that. We went, we had a discussion, like you said, those lively discussions. Uh,
It only depends when, you know, we've got, we've got the, uh, Norlana and Twenty-Ninth Street development is starting, okay? We've got the tent and expressway, the project that's ongoing. We're getting Bowie, you know, ready. There's more industrial, uh, the opportunity to get, uh, buildings and that. I'm just saying that we can't be short on, on, on that, on the engineering part of it. And also in the permitting and construction part of it. Cause we are growing, we're gonna be growing, and we need to make sure we have competent individuals that, that can be there when it's requested so that the, the project keeps moving.
We agree with the last part of this year, we got a further exec. So this position was not asked for delay, but we got a further exec that helps streamline, uh, right away and inspection. That for the engineering department. That was a big, uh, big help. Uh, in this position that we're asking for, and, and we can reevaluate that probably next year, but when we look at the capital budget, and when, when we do that, we do it now, we just start to, we request design money. And so when you look at the capital side, for instance, if you look at, uh, I think we did Twenty-Ninth Street, you don't have a construction dollar, you don't have a design dollar. And that design dollar is meant for, for a result. And so for me, when I'm being realized, if he's still gonna be slashing those design dollars, then I need to request that position and, and hold firmly. When I see that capital side still being funded correctly, then I say, I don't need this position no more. And we have that discussion. And so he done, he done it without me. Uh, I'll definitely reevaluate that.
We have given it an opportunity to get another one. Another person, you don't wanna take it no problem. But no, we, we are, we're gonna get to a boom. And, and when, when, when it starts, we need to keep up with it. Those are really important.
Well, I, I fully anticipate that, uh, Eduardo will come back to me next year and ask for probably more than one employee.
Well, I was, I was seeing it while, I don't know, like, we had a, one of our packets. There was a graph saying about the residential growth and the commercial growth. The residential went up high, but the commercial went down.
Well, and that's why, that, exactly, so that's cu- current. Because now, when, when all of these projects start going, you, you're gonna be, there could be a lot of movement. Oh, yeah. In the next year or two years.
And that kind of, the permitting, I know, like, that falls in normal, I think she got a position of that, over that, that far.
I was wondering like how time, you know.
Yeah, one of that, but the other thing is the design, to make sure that the design starts, that the project starts.
And, and that's, and that, and that's what, what Eduardo mentioned is, is, is we are funding design and we are making sure that in that process, uh, he's got money to cover, um, the professional service he needs to get that design done. Um, and, you know, the analysis that I go through is taking variable cost and, and making it fixed. Or how long can I carry it as a variable cost before I absorb it permanently?
Yep, go.
Been great.
Thanks so much.
Okay, uh, Mayor Wu round out the meeting with traffic operations. Uh, Marlen is here. I just wanna say for the record, uh, if any of you guys have complaints about red lights or congestion in city, don't call me, call Marlen.
Well, let's start.
That, uh, this is the first time we're here at the fine theater here to be on, uh, the traffic in front of you. But it's also been really exciting to be able to showcase a lot of the work that we have been doing over the last couple of years, staying in the glass. Uh, maybe we can do a video, but we all have had a chance to be down this traffic twice as much as we, but if you don't zoom in, it's divided by the project and it's gonna be a couple more. I have, uh, two funds that I know we need to receive. Uh, the first one is the traffic department. We, uh, from the work started back, a lot of it we can focus on, uh, on the capital outlet, we get through. We got, um, commercial, uh, partially done. So I know buses obviously gets carried out for, uh, the year. And then in turn, uh, when we come back for, they have, um, we, um, we've got more to do. Um, with the free lighting, um, there were two changes there actually that I'm making that in the both teams. We can, uh, upset here to the CFP, so that we have some free lighting. I've built a lot of structures in this last year and completed a lot of, uh, new installations and it's been so consistently. But I will, if you, both of so and how to die and because for the most part, we have a pretty good partnership in the, in, we don't have a structure. Um, but that's all I have, but I will.
Questions?
I have a question. Have, have you, uh, considered creating more cafes for the metro stops?
Shelters.
Now, have y'all, has anyone considered that?
Maybe not.
We don't, he, he, we probably got, did that last year, the update. And if you go to city manager, grab that too, and then we could, we have an updated workshop on it. Cause we did like thirty or forty, two years or something, right?
If there are areas that you have specific concerns about, if you'll let us know, we're happy to look at those. Um, just, just get that information. If there are particular stops that you're concerned about, I'll get it to us so that we can. If there are areas that you have specific concerns about, if you'll let us know, we're happy to look at those, um, just, just get that information, if there are particular stops that you're concerned about, I'll get it to us so that we can.
What was the role of the designer that you were wishing to put on?
Yes.
I do.
But there's. So, I can remember, I hope it should be a lot of. Just balls that are like box shoes.
Well, we get to worry about, you know, when we were selected, uh, probably during, uh, when you're on rest week. Giving a lot of just information now on being safe on your way to reach, they call it sidewalk, or you decide what you're gonna be.
But that's, that was the role of the designers?
Well, one of, that designer would help us give organize, and start winning all that coordination, like with the street, currently, right now, our designers can do that, which we have to, only committed to solely development, and getting through one of the best they've come to, which, over the years, ever since, um, we have, or the lockdowns have, uh, are no longer, and like, we've seen a significant increase in the through our requests, and I wanna say that it's at least eighty percent of our workers. Um, so, one of the designers is British, I got the other, uh, designer is kind, I also the streetlight project, um, the streetlight project, and along with the three one one request, and then stick on design, so, um, the streetlight project, we're very invested in it, it's a lot of hours, we're coordinating the construction, for the installation, with not a fee, but, uh, shut us together, and people not being able to work in your, in your, on your property. Uh, it's a lot of work, and so, we haven't been able to go back and focus on vision here, on what we wanna do to engage the community. Uh, the other, the other function that I wanted the designer to add is to create maps that help us in inventory a lot of our signals, um, also projection for the future, when we wanna do a turn in the section, mixed full, or audible effect, and, um, the other, uh, tattoo that I wanted them to also start getting funding, so when you're applying for a grant, and going, oh, when you could go through the MPO, you'll have to put, uh, costs here, and you, uh, sort of like a preliminary proposal on working line, and now that takes time. First, we get the project awarded, and we're being proud because also a lot of with me to, to give them all that money back, so all that takes time, and it was obviously, as we met, so you're having to be looking back to, oh, we really wanna do this, do more, and reach out to the community, and some of them, uh, just be safer, maybe visually, uh, have, do these other trails, as you, uh, do, see the light, those sessions, and the third part, too, as your first team, uh, school, um, have that, uh, uh, going to be used.
Okay.
A lot of that issue, uh, those ones that were not able to save for, and, uh, a lot of the, uh, things we did, we quit that again, three, three one ones, uh, you won't call, and also shooting ladies and people, I'd like to, I'd like to do a workshop, the, the, in, installation, and, 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 those requests as well, and I have been to show what, what that increases is, we even had a subdivision recently, that makes two, uh, quarters, that installed, clean out the, the, uh, uh, permit.
They did, but. Yeah.
I, I would mention the patients, but.
I have an idea.
They're getting to the point where people are desperate, and, so, we're, we're trying to.
JJ lives across the street. Yes.
Uh, we're, we're trying to do as much as we can with what we have, so we know that with, uh, additional designers, we can be able to, uh, reach out, they call that a community.
I think that's one of the main, in terms of a lot of, or, uh, were constituents, was speed humps.
Yeah, but then people watch speed, speed humps on tour fairs.
I mean, but, some, one, some don't. Yeah, tour fairs, okay, you can't, but there is some streets, and usually, there's one that came up and said, you know, hey, we got a sign that says thirty, everybody's passing forty, fifty.
Marlen, let's look at putting a workshop together so we can, you know, run down the criteria, eligibility criteria for the public, so that there's better understanding of, of where those devices work and where they don't.
And, Marlon, you think, is, is it possible that we can, I mean, not, maybe not monthly, but, uh, maybe every three months, get a map of how we're doing on our lighting, like, what areas, where are they at?
Absolutely.
Like, you know, every other month or whatever, get in one of our packages.
At least once a quarter.
Quarter, get in a package, just, you know.
Marlen, if you get that put together, we'll get it out in the Friday package on a quarterly basis.
So, when's the next comprehensive traffic study?
Uh, well, actually, we have a significant, uh, CFP, or, uh, so it's, um, for station, um, well, pretty much to improve our safety, and so, the limits for our citizens, those who we have, uh, by your CFP plan, that says, when you're on, you should tackle it, it's actually, it's, it's, we, so far.
Okay.
And so, we hope that you're there, they can get some information, or, uh, maybe, it's not, yeah, we can, that larger, um, uh, the, 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 I should give a, 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 desert grant, towards, we'll see.
Was the last one from two thousand twenty-one or twenty-two?
In, uh, May, twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two, right?
The, uh, the, uh, same, from the bond.
From the bond, okay, I recall that. And then, as part of the bond, that's where we also started connecting the, uh, the controllers and I guess the brains, so they can speak to each other and communicate with them, that was part of it, too? See, I haven't forgot. Okay, good enough.
Ike, uh, downtown area is, who's responsible for downtown area, Metro?
Uh, yeah, uh, downtown. Mario.
Mario.
You gotta be, you gotta be for that.
No, no, no.
Where's Mario?
Is that here?
See, if we have anything, you know, that's coming up.
Well, he's, he's not here right now, so if there's anything bad you wanna say about him now, it's.
Yeah, but you hide it here, so.
Did you get the ticket?
No, no. I don't got a receipt for that thing.
Well, uh, well, incidentally, uh, we were leaving to tie it to everybody, uh, from Baja California.
Got any other questions?
Nope, not that, so much.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I just wanted to let the commission know, uh, that I provided, yesterday I mentioned in the overview that I would provide you the remaining of the outstanding debt obligations citywide.
Okay.
Uh, and so, that, that information was left with you today, that includes water funds, uh, wastewater, the airport, and Anzalduas, uh, and those are the debts that are not, uh, secured by any form of tax. So, that information was compiled and provided to you today.
Oh, here.
That's, uh, that's the only additional information I had to share with you there.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, Ike.
Say that.
If there's nothing else, the meeting is done.